Okay. It's 12 o'clock noon, so we're going to call this meeting to order. And first thing I want to do is just thank you for coming. And we always look forward to this day to be able to have our two boards together. But at this time, I need to have a motion to approve our agenda. We should have it in front of you.
Some move, Mr. Chairman?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the agenda. Anything that needs to change that you know of? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to pose? Okay, we have an agenda. This time, I'll turn it over to you.
Chair of the board, the Hollywood Board.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the invitation to be here. We'll call our Board of Commissioners to order, and we'll do our pledge as well as the invocation, and I'll ask Jerry if he will do the blessing on the food at the same time. So stand with me as we do the pledge.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. We thank you for this gathering, God. We grant that your peace will reside in this meeting, God, that we will make wise and prudent decisions. Now, Father, we ask you to bless the food that we're about to receive, that it may be nourishment to our bodies. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now, we'll take the first order of business, and that'll be, we'll take a quick recess, go straight to the meal. And Lisa, is there anything we need to explain? Okay, we're back in session. We're going to come back, and the first thing we're going to do is turn it over to Dr. Phillips, and he's going to begin the presentation.
I want to thank you all for being here. This is an activity that's sort of a culmination for me of a year. You kind of measure from January to January, and I measure from budget year to budget year, just because of the work that we have to do. What I have, I want to share with you before we hand anything out, is a quick 12-slide PowerPoint that has some narrative in it, just to kind of give you an idea of how we got up to the point of where we are today. And for those that haven't been through many iterations of the budget, it may be enlightening to you. For some of you, I think you know it's going to be a review, and you will be very well aware of the information.
I'll just move over, because I might be in their way. I understand the 12 slides.
We've gone through a strategic planning process. We actually wrapped it up last year that yielded a new vision and mission for us, and we went through the accreditation process, and we were fully reaccredited about a month or month and a half ago. But our mission statement is that we'll provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success. And for us, that is year to year, whether the student's a kindergarten, or a third grader, or wherever they happen to be, in the range of ages and grades of services that we provide. But certainly, life after high school, no matter what their choice is, if they go into a college, or they're going directly into the workforce, we want to make sure that the school experience that they've had with us prepares them for life after graduation. We want to continue to make sure that that's our focus, no matter what we do. And our intent when making a budget request, and I think this is important for the public to be aware of, too, as we go through this process, we want to make sure that we're describing our needs, so that you have an idea of what we feel like are the things that we need to try to get done, and those are going to vary from year to year. And then also making a budget statement, which is a statement just to kind of, to quantify and then put in a narrative format what it is that we're saying in our numbers. We want to be responsible and reasonable. We want to be transparent and honest. We want to be clear and concise. And then what we want to do, and certainly you'll see this today, is show full amounts in worst-case scenarios because of the unknown. And you all know, the public may not know, putting a budget together from a school system perspective is a difficult task to do when you don't know what your income is going to be from the state, from the federal government. So you're trying to make a best guess, an educated guess. You're trying to be conservative where you can be, but where there are situations where the numbers may go off in a different direction, I want to make sure that we notify you all of that, so that we're not surprised on the back end. The budget process for us really kicks into gear in December. We start talking about what our capital needs are that we're dealing with. We're really looking throughout the school year of where we're at with respect to year-to-date expenditures, and how we're looking on what we set aside for the budget. But we consider all the information that we have, and we really feel like we're going out, we're doing a lot of information-seeking, trying to pull together what we can pull together, starting in December. And those kinds of things are, what's the hospitalization going to, the cost going to be? What is retirement going to look like? Do we have any idea if there's a conversation about there being a raise coming down the pike? Are there other cost increases that we know that we're going to be dealing with? But to be real honest with you, December is a bit early to do that from that point of view. So what we have to deal with in that timeframe is really what we've got control over within Beaufort County, and a lot of that is capital in putting that together. But I like to describe it, it's like trying to put a puzzle together, number one, without having all the pieces, but also without having the box covered to know what it is that you're trying to put together. So you're shuffling these things together to try to begin to make something work. And then we really get into it in earnest when we get into the end of January and February. But just a few of the things, and you all have seen these, and you know that these are issues that we deal with, are local conditions and things that may be going on within Beaufort County that we have to be aware of. We also have legislative action, particularly in Raleigh, that we're dealing with, that impacts us one way or the other. Budgets, and as you all know, we deal with three budgets, the one from the governor, the one from the Senate, and the one from the House. And as we stand in front of you today, the only one that we've seen is one from the governor. So we're not sure what the other two budgets are going to look like. A federal budget, which we don't know yet what the figures are for that. This year, class size has bubbled up to the top of something that we've really got to focus on, and we want to talk with you about that as we get in. ADM is an acronym that stands for Average Daily Membership, and it's the enrollment in our numbers that we have in our school district. That plays a role in how much money we get from the state, and also how much we draw down from the federal government. That certainly has an impact in what we do. If there are raises that are being discussed, if there are position cuts that are being discussed, or increases, textbooks, technology, course offerings, allotment formula, and finally, the impact of charter schools, which is having a greater and greater impact on what we do. We have to consider all of those pieces and put that together to try to put together a realistic budget, and then explain the rationale behind it. Challenges that we face, the political climate in Raleigh particularly, that can sometimes be difficult because of just the political nature, not one side or the other, but politics sometimes get involved in things, and they can be challenging. In the past, we've had some issues with the timing of legislative action, where things actually were voted on in July, and we had to implement them in August with very little time, or very little funding to do things that were mandated. Staffing needs that we need to achieve our mission, this is one I want to speak on, because I think there's a misconception with respect to central services, particularly in our county. If you take away the folks that are doing specific roles, and by that I mean people in the finance department are doing finance work, if we set them to the side, and the folks that are in transportation, the folks that are in maintenance, and the folks that are doing exceptional children's special ed, it only leaves us with six individuals in the county to meet the academic needs of our general education population, students and teachers. So roughly 7,000 students, a little bit less than that now, and our many teachers and support staff. We've got six individuals that are working with those. Four of those individuals are paid on a teacher scale. And we've done a lot of salary audit, look at where we're at compared to other counties, and we are lean, but we're starting to feel the brunt of that. And I want to share with you, as we talk about our budget statement, one of the areas that we've got to address is what we're doing in terms of support of our teachers, and that comes out of the curriculum area. And these are positions, we've got a director position open that we're not going to fill, and we hope to be able to fill that with a leader, an instructional leader who can come in, that again, would be paid on a teacher scale. So in the big scheme of things, from what we were paying to where we're at, we'll save money, but we've got to continue to provide services. We feel like we need an additional instructional specialist in the area of English Language Arts for high school, in the area of math for high school. We don't have anybody right now for science and social studies. We need to be looking in that direction. And then instructional technology, we feel like we're one short, and then we'll make a hire in our assessment center with the accountability, but those are positions that are vacant, so there won't be anything new added. Those are not all in the budget this year, but I want you to realize that we see that as one of the needs that we have moving forward, and we'll have to make some corrections to get to that point. The other challenges that we deal with, as you see on the screen, accountability continues to go up for us, in terms of the different measures that we're being held accountable for, and what's expected for us. At the same time, the number of resources that we have to carry those out continue to diminish. So we're really, truly having to do more and more with less and less, and we can continue to get that done, but at what point are the resources stripped so far that we can't continue to function the way that we've been able to do? And I have said this before, and I want it to be very clear, the mission of our school system applies to all of our students. And I don't want a student in our county, because of the zip code or the area that they live, to be able to look around the county and say, "I'm not getting the same opportunity, I don't have the same resources as a student does in another part of our county, just because of where I live." I also don't want anybody to say that because I'm from Beaufort County, I don't have the same opportunities as students in other counties around the state. And certainly, there are different opportunities with what you can do financially, but I hope we're able to get the most bang for the buck as we possibly can by using money wisely and trying to operate efficiently. The other impact we have is the LEA budget deadline that's mandated. We have to have something to the county manager by the 15th of May. We generally do this the last week in April, or the first week in May for that reason, and then there are a few weeks to tweak and do what we have to do, but by law, that has to be delivered. The state-level budgets, as I've mentioned before, we don't know what we're working with. Changing society and the needs of our students, the students that we're dealing with in our school system now, whether you're private charter or public schools, are different than they were 15 or 20 years ago. And we're having to meet some of those needs, and sometimes they're not academic needs. They may be behavioral needs, they may be emotional needs, they may be physical needs and basic needs that aren't being met, and we're trying to step in to take care of that. In many cases, we have to partner with folks, because we can't do all that. We're not set up to do that type thing across the board. The recruitment of teachers/educators becoming more and more difficult as we have fewer and fewer graduates coming out of those programs makes it more difficult to find qualified individuals. And then utility and fuel cost fluctuations that are tied into, what kind of season did you have? Was it a rough winter? Did fuel costs stabilize? Have they been low? We've got to put that in place in terms of what we're trying to work on. But I think the thing that I want to share with you is that I think when we go back and look at every fiscal year and the budget that we work with, there's really a story and a narrative that comes out of that. And sometimes, we don't realize what that is until we look backwards at what we were dealing with. I think if you look at last year's narrative, and you all may not be aware of this, the public may not be aware of this, what we were trying to do, we knew, over the course of the last four or five years, we knew that lean times were coming. And we worked hard to build up a fund balance, and we got that fund balance to a point that we knew that we were going to begin to appropriate that, so that we wouldn't have such a large impact on staff members. And we were able to do that a little bit at a time to the point that we were going to exhaust that fund balance. And you can't, just like in a personal, your personal budget, you can't budget and live off savings forever. And we knew that if we continued to allocate fund balance at the level that we had the last three years, that we were going to quickly run out, and at that point, when you've got no more fund balance, you've got to make tough decisions. So we were trying to cut back what we were doing last year to get within the boundaries of what we had, so we weren't relying on fund balance. The net result of that was we had to cut 32 positions, to just flat-out cut 32 positions that were a combination of teacher assistants, teachers, and folks that were in central services. And for me, that was more of a truing up of where we were. How did we get to that point? Part of the reason that we got there was when you have declining enrollment, and we're dealing with it this year coming up, that's one of the other cuts that we're going to talk about. When our ADM or our enrollment drops, the number of teachers that we get from the state decline, they get cut back. And if we don't make that adjustment, we have to pick those extra positions up on the local side. And we haven't done that through the years, and we made a true-up or correction for that last year. This year, we have to eliminate six more teaching positions, just because of the ADM and the enrollment decline that we're seeing. Now, after the end of the second month, the Department of Public Instruction will look at our enrollment, and if we're up by 100, more than what they projected, then we'll get some of that money and those positions restored. But we have to assume when we go in that we're going to have those cuts. So we've made those cuts as we move into next year. So in addition to the 32 last year, and the six that we've got moving forward, we're over 100 positions that have been cut in the last six years. The number's actually north of 100, but to be conservative, I want to give you that number. Fixed costs, we don't know about. The health and hospitalization and retirement, and you'll see why we put some numbers there. But I want to go back, the last year was fund balance. The year prior to that, you all may recall, teacher assistance was the topic. What are we doing with teacher assistance? And again, that was to try to shed the number of TAs that we had that were being paid on the local side, because that money was being drawn down from the state, but there was not enough money from the state to pay for the number of teacher assistants that we had. So we trimmed, Mark, do you remember that number?
I'd say 15.
There were 15 or so. We've trimmed significant numbers of teacher assistants through the last few years. But this year, what we're looking at is class size reduction, which really involves positions and space. And the class size reduction is a maximum number of students that we can have in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. Now, we did get a reprieve from this a couple of weeks ago, when the General Assembly did an amendment to House Bill 13, and what it did is it lowered the class size by one, which helped us out significantly. But, and the net result for us is, instead of having 27 people that we were going to have to bring in, that number came down to about nine. And then Mark was able to take a look at federal money that we get, and some of our schools in the past has been used to drive class size reduction initiatives, to get numbers down. And if the state's given us teachers for class size reduction, the federal dollars that we had to do that with, we're able to pay for some of those teachers that we would have had to let go. So we feel like right now, our number has gone from 27 down to five, and depending on the level of federal money we get, we may have that number down to one or zero. That's for this year coming up. Next year is another issue, when those numbers really go down to where those maximums are. And the positions may be a little bit easier for us to deal with, because what we're, the promise that we've been given is that next year, the General Assembly will allocate positions for us at school districts at the local level in the areas of art, music, PE, and world languages. And right now, we don't get an allotment for those positions, so we've had to take them out of the teacher allotment position we get. So we've done some correction this year. We'll be able to use our federal money to go a little bit deeper, and then we'll have to look at the allotment that we get from the state to make sure that we're covered as much as we can. But that will be an issue. The other issue related to that will be class, the physical space to be able to put those individuals, 27 teachers. How are we going to sprinkle them around, and where are they going to go? And the numbers for that will change next year, because it's really based on class size at individual schools, and those numbers fluctuate each year. The two budgets that we haven't seen, you're going to see in our budget, the biggest increase that we're requesting in the local side is on three pieces of the budget that we don't know the answers to yet, but we're working off what the governor's budget was. My feeling is the governor's budget this year probably won't carry as much weight as it has in the past, and I think if we could see the Senate side, we'd probably have a truer figure of where we're at, but we don't have that number yet. Catching up on capital, you'll see that in our capital request, there were some things that we just didn't get to last year because of where our capital funding was. You've got to catch up on some of those pieces, and that's the theme that we've got. Addressing curriculum needs that I've mentioned to you. Also, a coaching supplement that we've got put in. Our coaches have not received an increase in their supplement since 1991. And we went out, took a look at surrounding counties, and we were woefully behind. I mean, we were way, way behind in terms of what the coaching supplement were across the board for folks that were doing that work. Another impact that we've had is on our textbooks for students in Career and College Promise classes. These are the students that are duly enrolled. This is not early college. These are students that are in our high schools. And over the last three years, we've had 1,851 college courses that have been taken by our students. And we were involved in a program, a grant program, for three years called NC Iris with the New Schools Project that took care of the textbooks. And that program was going to run out, but the organization, the new schools, went belly up about six months earlier than the project ran out. So we were left holding the bag on that. But moving forward, our board feels like we need to continue to pay for those textbooks. There are a number of families with children who've taken advantage of that college course credit that couldn't afford the books otherwise, and we feel like that's something that we want to continue to do. And then the impact on charter schools, we'll hand out a document in just a few minutes that shows you what our charter school payment has been over the last five years. And it's increasingly getting larger and larger, and a bigger portion of the local money that we get, because they're getting fines and forfeitures, they get a piece of that. There's a lot of what we draw from the local side from you all, is a big percentage of what we get for each individual student goes to them as well on the local support. And then cuts and reductions, I've mentioned to this to you already, so I won't go into that. But our 2017-18 budget request has these three specific items in it. Textbooks for Career and College Promise, instructional support position for English Language Arts for high school, it's a teacher salary position, although it's technically at central services, there to support our teachers and students in the English Language Arts area. The coaching supplement increase, when you look at that number, it represents a 10% increase for the coaches, is what the increase is, and then an increase for field care or field maintenance for those individuals that are doing that at our schools. And there's a significant amount unknown, and when you see it, you're going to see it is a huge amount in terms of what our request is, but we have to budget for it. And that is the raises, when you take a look at that, in one part of the budget for the governor, there was a 2% raise, but then there was a raise that was as high as 6% for school administrators, and then teachers fit in somewhere in between. We're not sure exactly what that number will look like, or if there will even be a raise at all. There may not be a raise given. But because we've got it in a budget, what I don't want to do is spend time with you today, and then come back in three weeks or a month and say, "We're going to be a half a million dollars short, or $100,000 short, because we didn't budget for this." We're putting it in there with the prospect that it might happen, and then hopefully, if it does, it will be able to come in a little bit lower than what we've got. Healthcare and hospitalization, retirement, class size reduction, again, we went from 27 to five, and we feel like we can go from five to one or two, and hopefully, zero. But the reason I've got the blue arrow there and the question marks, our federal allotment is going to determine how far or how close to zero we can get, and we don't know that number yet. So let me show you what we're looking at. This is 2016-17. This is the year that we're currently in. Our local appropriation was $14.3 million. We plan to allocate $339,000 of our fund balance and $266,000 in fines and forfeitures. I can tell you, this is the best year in fines and forfeitures that we've had since I've been here, but we've had some really lousy years prior to this year. So I don't know how you project that out. We've projected a little bit of an increase, but we don't know if that'll hold true when we get into next year. So the total operating budget on the local side was $14.9 million. When you take a look at this, and I want to do this item by item, because I want to draw your attention to the different things we're talking about. If you start with the current budget that we have of 2016-17, what our proposal and request to add to that would be, the Career and College Promise textbook cost is $60,000. That's based on what we've done in the past, and we feel like we can hold true. Now, to let you know, what we're also trying to do to mitigate the costs that are here is that we're trying to encourage used books, we're trying to keep the books that we purchase and lend those back out to students. But the concern that we get into, the problem, is if the college adopts a new textbook, we can't use the old textbook. So we're trying to make that timeframe of when they adopt the book and use it longer, so that we can continue to use it over and over again. But that gets us into the book loaning business, but we feel like it's cheaper to do that than to try to buy new textbooks continually. The instructional support, English Language Arts for high school, that's a fully loaded teacher salary, that includes benefits and everything. And when you're looking at a person who's going to be supporting teachers across the county, you're assuming an individual who's got some experience. So we go a little bit higher end on the teacher scale there, but that's fully loaded. And then the coaching supplement increase that I mentioned earlier would be the total in that area. Those are the three increases that, when we met as a board, we were able to whittle down or pare down to the things that we felt like we wanted to include in the budget. But there are three big increases that we don't have any control over, and I feel like just for being legitimate in terms of the requests we're making, we need to show you what these are. Now, in addition to what we have here, the growth and the support, the curriculum support would come in subsequent years, and we would talk about that, but this is what we're talking about this year. If you add that up, it comes up to about $160,000. I'll show you that on another slide. The big dollars come in here. If there's a 5% pay raise, if that were to be across the board, and normally, it's not across the board, it's 2%, 3%, 6%, whatever, we put 5% in there to hold a place value. That is by far the largest dollar figure we've got, and it's over $365,000. Again, the Senate budget, if we knew what that number looked like, would help us get this refined a little bit more, but we don't know where that dollar figure's going to be. The 10% increase in health insurance and retirement, all of that clumped together, about $70,000, just over $69,000. Again, that number could be tweaked and refined, and we may be able to get that down lower. And then we have our class size reduction of five teachers. And again, we put five on that at $50,000 each, because we want to be able to make sure that we've got that covered. That number could potentially go down to zero. So, you know, we've got the ability to do something with this last number possibly, and then these two numbers may be addressed in one way or the other, depending on what happens on the budget side. So as you look at that, you're looking at an overall budget of $15,747,098. But I want to, again, look in depth, because I want to make sure that the point that I'm trying to make is real clear. We're looking locally at the things that we want to grow in, in being confined in these three areas. And then you've got another three areas that are down here that really are out of our control, are going to be dependent on what kind of funding and budgets come in. And I want to call that Plan A for a minute, and I want to call that, or Part A and Part B, because I want to show you the real numbers when we deal with that. If you look at Part A, and you pull out the three pieces that are local that we're talking about, you add that up, it's about $156,490, which is a little bit more than 1% of what we got on a local appropriation last year. The biggest section is the one that I've been talking about, that I've got the red circle drawn around down here, and we've got to refine that and drill down and get to a truer number, once we have that information. But when you add all of that together, I mean, if you look at that, it comes in at just under $700,000. It's a huge amount of money. But the big asterisk is there, because the actual amount's going to be determined by the budget approved by the General Assembly, and then by the federal allotment that we received. I'm confident that we'll get a cut in the federal allotment, but I'm hopeful that the cut won't be so great that we can't take care of some of these class size reduction and positions that we're talking about. We certainly will have to tighten up in some other areas, but I feel like we'll be able to do some work in that particular area. So the way that we've made a recommendation, I want to know you, I want to explain to you why these numbers are on the screen the way that they are. So our local budget request from the appropriation will be the third line down, $15.372 million. Fines and forfeitures, we've adjusted up a little bit because of our work this year, $275,000. That may come in a little bit north of that, it may come in a little bit south, we just don't know. Fund balance appropriation, we've set $100,000, and the reason why that's lower than it was this year is because what I've got in the highlight beside it, the 2018-19 class size reduction, we may have to dip into fund balance significantly, depending on how many positions we have to add, and what kind of help we get from the state. We do not know what those allotments are going to look like for what they call enhancement positions. So we feel like we've got to be safe and prudent, and make sure that we've got ourselves covered there. That, so that is the local piece. Lisa, if we can pass out the two things, two documents I want to put in your hand. We're going to, I'm going to pass out a document that shows you on one page, we tried to be as brief as we could, but we also want to give you an opportunity to ask specific questions if you have specific questions. You're going to have the document that shows what the current budget is versus what we're proposing. And you're also going to have a document that Willie Mack has put together that has the spending that we've had over the last five years, and it shows you the local appropriation, it shows you the charter school amount, it gives you a really good picture, in a snapshot of what things have looked like through the years, to give you a little bit of a historical perspective.
Chair, I want to ask if you or any of our board members want to add anything to what I've said?
I've said?
No, I mean, just see what questions the commissioners have. I'll try to address them.
The yellow highlight that's in the middle of your page is where we are with our charter school funding. And the only thing I want to say about that is, as we send more and more money to our charter schools, we've got fewer and fewer dollars to deal with from the local appropriation that we get. The money from the state's automatically sent to the charter schools. And I know part of that is an issue that we've got to deal with and the question that I would want to ask, and I'm not against charter schools or private schools or anybody else being out there, but what do we need to provide or what do we need to do better to hold on to the students that we're losing? And I think you have to look at that in terms of continuous improvement. There are going to be some folks who are going to want to leave for a Christian education and there are limits on what we can do being a state organization, I understand that. But if there's a quality of service that we're providing or we're not doing something that we need to do to meet the needs of the student, we want to make sure that we're alert to that and we continue to work with that. We've got a meeting with homeschool parents scheduled at the end of this month and we're trying to talk about some partnerships that we can create working with the homeschool population. And I use the word partnership because we have to partner with lots of folks now with the kind of work that we're doing just because it stretches us beyond our boundaries and ability to provide the resources and the types of provisions that need to be put in place to help our students. But are there any questions on there that I can answer?
You mentioned homeschool. How many students do you think are homeschooled here in Beaufort County?
The last number I saw was a little over 500. And we've got, we've got the information, we're going to reach out to each one of those and just ask them to come in and have a meeting with us and talk about what we can do to plan. That's a significant number of individuals. And a lot of them are homeschooled for a reason and we're not criticizing that at all. That's a choice that the parents have made and if they continue to want to do that and not be involved with us, we certainly understand it, but we want to extend an opportunity to do something to partner with one another. We've also done some things with local, some of the private schools, the Christian schools in Beaufort County, where we've provided training in some of the work that we're doing in literacy and we've opened our doors to allow them to come in. My feeling is if students are going to be educated in our county, we want them to be educated by as highly qualified individuals as we can. And if that teacher can come in and get some training that's being provided either by our teachers or to our teachers as well, the students in the end are going to be the ones that benefit from that. So you know, we partner in lots of different ways and some are minor and some are more involved and comprehensive, but we'll continue to do that.
How many children have we lost to charter schools in the last five years?
We've got a number. I don't think the number is on that sheet. We could do the math for you, but it continues to go up.
It's, right now, we're at, as of the January report, it's 394 we're billing out.
394 that we're being billed for and paid. And the way that we do the billing and the paying is a little bit different too. When I, when I first came onboard and charter schools were relatively new across the state, we did a count of how many students we had and then at beginning of the year, we sent a check to the charter schools. The problem with that is if the kids came, if the students came back to us, we never got the money to come back to us. So we do more of a reconciliation now. I don't know, are we doing quarterly or monthly, Willie Mack?
We're trying to do it monthly and then we'll do it through and then...
And that's verifying that those students who are on the roster at the charter school are there. We haven't had problems in our county, but in other places around the state, there've been students on rosters that weren't actually in the schools. We haven't had that issue, but we want to make sure, just like other people expect us to be accountable, we expect the charter schools to be accountable in terms of the students that they're reporting, particularly if we're sending dollars for the local side of that.
To those charter schools. So we're losing over a half a million dollars to home and charter schools?
Well, it's, I think the number on that sheet is over $800,000 just to charter schools and we really can't count in homeschools because for the most part, those students haven't been on the books. But you could do a cost per student and calculate that to kind of get an idea of the money that's there if you wanted to do that. It's significant. And I think, you know, the other thing that we're in the middle of that we've never had to do before, this happened in Cumberland County before I left. Bill Harrison, who was the superintendent, you know, said the school districts are going to have to start to do more public relations and advertising and getting a message out than we've ever had to do before. And in the old days, we were the only, only deal in town. I mean, we were it. It was a monopoly for lack of another term and people came to us unless they went to the private world. Well, there are opportunities for, for parents to make choices outside of public school now. We have to get the message out of the things that we're doing. You know, last week, PS Jones went to compete along with Bath Elementary in a robotics competition, won the first, I don't, I think it's the second year we've had a formal team. It's the first year we've been in that level of competition. They won the state championship in robotics, which involves a lot of hands-on coding and engineering type things. We've got a lot of programming type, I don't mean computer programming, but programming in terms of educational programs that we're trying to offer to students as early as second grade, but folks in the, in our community don't know about it. You know, we still have a lot of families in the community that don't know that their students can be in a traditional high school and take college credit and get dual credit for that. They get the high school credit and the college credit. We've estimated that we've saved our families about $440,000 in the last three years just on tuition alone. And if a student walks away across the stage at graduation and they've got three credit hours, it's still three credit hours, but we've got many that are walking away that have got 18 plus or very close to an associate's degree so that when they enroll into the community college or, in North Carolina, there's an articulation agreement, they can go to any of the UNC schools and they get that credit already, they can walk in as a sophomore or very close to that. So there's a great value for our families to be aware of that and we've got to get the word out and make sure that they're aware of it. The other thing I noticed when I got here seven years ago, when we did awards programs at the end of the year for high school, the number of scholarships in terms of value and the number that were awarded was not nearly as, as high as I thought it would be and I regret I don't have that number. Last year, we knocked the top off in terms of the numbers of millions of dollars that our seniors had earned with regards to scholarships. Part of that is that we're doing a little bit more work and we're getting involved and we're pressing that information out. The other part I think is the rigor and the work that's going on and the fact that we're keeping our students in school longer. Our five-year graduation cohort is just under 90% right now for five years. And I think we're able to do that because we're tapping into what student needs are and we're not trying to make every graduate look the same when they come out. The career and technical education component of what we're doing is functioning better than it has functioned ever. And, and we do a lot of things. We have some metrics that we have professional credentials that students earn where they're able to go into the marketplace and they've got a credential that says a student is qualified to do Microsoft Office or it may be a welding certificate. We've got other things that are, that go beyond just a high school diploma to show an employer that these students are more than ready. They're, they're capable and they're able to go beyond just an entry level position. And that's what we mean by preparing our students. It's not just to get ready for the next phase, but to be ready to excel when you go into that. Dr. Tansy at the community college has said we've got fewer students now that need the remediation as compared to what we've had in the past when they come in as incoming freshmen. So you know, the rigor is there when things are relevant, we want those to be meaningful. If we've got students that want to go to an Ivy League school or a very prestigious school that takes quite a bit of work to get into, we want to make sure that we're preparing the students for those opportunities as well. So when you take a look at the benchmarks of what we're doing in terms of trying to hit the marks, I feel like we've done that. My fear is how long can you continue to function and have to take cuts in different places? And, and that's honestly what my fear is, when do you get to the point that you can't sustain that anymore? And you know, I think we're, we're providing the opportunities. We do a lot of things in Beaufort County before the state mandates and I like that because I think we're on the right page. The DIBELS is an indicator, an acronym that stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. We did that a couple of years before the state mandated. It's now required in kindergarten through third grade to build a foundation of reading skills. And my philosophy has been if we can get students foundational skills when they're younger, they're going to need a lot less remediation when they get older. And if they can get out of third grade and they're proficient and they're able to excel, then we can get them into higher level classes, we can let them do other things so they're not having to spend time making up coursework or get remediation. It also saves us money because we're not having to pay for tutors and to do those kinds of things. And they're just a plethora of reasons why that strong foundation is important. So we're committed to doing that. We're having students do career exploration. We're taking students as early as second grade onto the campus at the community college so they can see what's out there. And they visit again in the fifth grade, in the eighth grade, and they start to explore careers, things they may not even are aware are out there so that when we start to work with them in high school, we're getting an idea of what their skill sets are, what their preferences are, and then try to help them get the kind of training and the skills that they need in the courses that we have to offer. And I think that's very important and I think that's what's contributed to the reduced dropout rate that we have in the graduation rate. That has nothing to do with dollars that are on here, but I think, I just wanted to say in reflection of what we do day in and day out, for lack of a better word, the minutia of what we deal with every day, the day-to-day details are where I have to be involved in the things that are most important to me. And then these things overlay that so that we can get that work done.
I have a question, Don. Now first, I want to, I want to thank yourself and the school board for everything they do for the students in this county. I have a question. You have so much per student that comes from various sources, feds, state and ourselves. Of that dollar amount, there's certain expenses in there. Busing, health, I guess, nursing, lunch, things that services you provide. Now that, that total dollar amount, when you, a student transfers from private school or charter school, whatever, that amount of money, the total amount goes with the student, correct? Whether you do it monthly or quarterly, however you do it. But the expenses, some of the expenses that I mentioned, you still have those expenses, don't you?
That's right.
So, do you know what that percentage is? So if we're transferring, I'll just make up a number, 10 grand. Is 10% of that, is 20% of that where the county's footing the bill?
I don't know what that percentage is. We could try to calculate that, but it's very true, the bus still runs if we lose a student to a charter school. We still have the same number of teachers until we drop enough students that they take teacher positions away from us and we start dealing with that. So there, there's some costs that continue to be there. If we lose, you know, 15 students to a charter school, that money goes with them along, you know, that full amount of money goes with them, but we still do have those, those expenses and those costs that continue to go on.
Transferring, you're estimating going to transfer $800,000, give or take. That's really not a true number. The number should be higher.
Well, the cost that we...
Because the cost that you're occurring is...
That's right. That's the actual dollar figure in terms of the check we write. The cost for us is greater than that, but it's not involved in it.
So, we don't take that into consideration?
I don't know what that number is. We could try to look at that and see if there's any way to put a calculation, to get a figure on that.
Eight hundred thousand is just local.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's true, the 800,000 is just local. We don't deal with the state anymore because they, they draw that off the top. That's right.
Do you have these other expenses you're still maintaining?
Yeah.
So that's a cost you're eating in your budget?
That's right.
Which has a major...
And you would argue...
Depending on the number, could have a major impact on your budget.
It could. The argument would be at the end of the year, if it gets more trued up, because if your ADM has dropped, the state's not going to give you those teaching positions, but for that year, we've had to cover that. And then that's part of what we're dealing with moving into next year with the six positions that we've lost. If we continue to keep them on, that becomes a local responsibility and we don't want to push that onto the commissioners and have to pay for that out of local money or fund balance. So we've trimmed those based on ADM.
So as I consider your budget requests, Lisa, if that's not too difficult, that would be an interesting number.
We'll see what we can pull. I don't want to cut it off, but I want to get into capital if I can do that.
Don, how does the early college program out of the community college and the Biotech Center in Janesville, how does that affect your budget?
The early college doesn't affect us at all because that we, there was, there was seed money to get that started and once the ADM, the enrollment at that school got to a certain point, we're able to draw teacher positions down to cover that and the administration, that type thing. We also get a different, a small fund that comes from the General Assembly for that particular program. All the textbooks we're talking about don't involve any of that, that's kind of a standalone.
So you're not, you're not transferring any money from the county budget over to the college?
It's treated just like another school. It's not, it doesn't impact us. I mean, it's just, it's one of our 14 schools.
Okay. How about, how about the Biotech Center in Janesville?
The Nurseba school is an impact to us and we have MAC 61. I think right now there's 61 students at Nurseba. The concern that I have on that is that 50% of the freshman class last year were students from Beaufort County. And Mack and I serve on that board together and I've talked with the principal and we can't continue to have 50% of that population because they're drawing, I think, from five counties. They draw a few from Terrell, Washington, Martin, Pitt and Beaufort. And I feel like whatever percentage Beaufort County has in terms of potential students, we shouldn't have a higher percentage than that that's being, that's being pulled in. But we had a large amount, I mean, a per pupil expenditure from local and from state of our dollars go and goes to Nurseba. So you know, it's a big chunk of our money that's there. And then when you look at it, if you take a look at the books for Nurseba, every dollar figure's different from the counties because the amount of appropriation is different. But they get a portion of our low wealth money too. So we're, we're talking about local money from you all, but when we get the money from the state and we receive low wealth dollars, a portion of those low wealth dollars go with the student to Nurseba as well. Some of the other counties around us receive an additional funding called Small Schools Funding. Those students get their portion of that Small Schools Funding that goes along with them too. They also get fines and forfeiture dollars that we pay an attorney to do and you know, we want to begin to investigate if we can charge those schools that are receiving that money. We need to charge the salary of the individual who's collecting that on our end because we're producing those dollars. And you know, so there's a big discussion that still goes on at the state level of what, what dollars are hands-off. You know, I feel like if we write a grant, the charter school shouldn't have an opportunity to take that money if we're the ones that write a grant. If they write a grant, we don't get any portion of theirs. So you know, there's got to be some lines drawn somewhere to make this fair to everybody that's involved, but you know, the Nurseba population, the rate of students that we have that are going there, I'm glad that we have that many that qualify because it's kind of a high level in terms of being able to get in and the students have done very well, but we may have to look at a cap in terms of the number of students that we have. And I'm hoping that'll correct itself and take care of itself.
Can you get the dollar map that we're having to transfer over there?
We've got that. I can give that to you very quickly. I don't have it with me right now, but we can get that to you. Going to capital, is that okay? Appreciate your patience and listening. The next sheet we're going to hand out is what you've seen before. It is, the capital is seven pages long and we've broken it out by area. For example, safety and security or athletics or asphalt or painting or whatever. And then we have the individual locations that are there and what the request is to try to be as descriptive as we could be for you to see what it is that we're actually requesting in the capital area. We put the estimated costs there, we've done the best we could to try to get folks to come out and give us realistic bids to keep that together. And then we've given you the capital 1718, which is what we feel like are priorities that we want to include in this year's budget. And then we've done the two to five year that we've got included as well so that you can get an idea of what's on the radar, but not included this year. And I know you have a chance to go through this and break it down item by item and I don't want to do that today, I value your time too much, but I've highlighted eight things that I want to show you. And I don't know whether or not it'll generate conversation today. You may see some things on the sheet that go beyond the eight that I've highlighted that I want you to be aware of. The first one is the system-wide request that we've got. Can you pull that up? The pictures for me. The system-wide request that has cameras, camera systems and door locking systems. There's some other security things that we've done, items that we've taken care of that I can't, I don't feel comfortable sharing in an open session. We could go into closed session at some point, I could tell you what a lot of those are. But the things that the public sees and the pieces that you all have probably seen or have been looking to see were the storefronts and the security projects that we put in place at our, and that was one of the big initiatives that we had going on this year. The idea was we don't want foot traffic to be able to show up on a campus and be able to have access to different points of the campus without us knowing they're on campus or having permission to be there. So when you go through and you take a look at the pictures and we can give you as much detail of this as you would want, this is what it looks like at Bath Elementary School. So if you walk into Bath, you, you walk into an area this way, you can't go into this door, it's locked. You have to walk into the office and state who you are and what your purpose is and then they would buzz this door and you would walk in this way. Notice that there's the bar on the backs if there was an emergency, a person would be able to push this door and go out. So there's, we're not impeding or reducing the egress, we've got that in place, but those doors from the inside, an outside person coming into the building, they're not able to get into this without them being buzzed in. And there are times when we lock those down and then there are times when it's more free-flowing and we have to tweak that to get an idea of what things look like at school. Northeast Elementary, very similar. They've had an odd way of coming in that building since the building was built. They kick, you come in the opposite side of the way traffic flows on a highway and they'd come into this area. So you walk into this catchment area, you're not able to open these doors. In fact, you can't even get to the office here, you have to push a button and then the receptionist or person who's in front pushes a button that allows you to come in. Again, then you have to state your name and your reason for being there, that type thing. Eastern Elementary, if you've ever walked into the front, you would kind of come in here toward the front receptionist area, these doors would be on your left and your right. You don't have any access outside of that catchment area until you're buzzed in by somebody who's giving you that permission. John Small, down at the end, this is the office door back over here. So a person can come in and go into the office, but they're not able to get past those doors to get access into the building. PS Jones, very similar, the door of PS Jones is on this side. Snowden Elementary, because the setup there, we're trying something different there, this is called an Aphone and it allows a user to be able to press the button and talk with the receptionist they've got. Is there a video piece there?
Yes, sir.
There's a video, it's kind of a video and phone so that they can see and hear who the individual is. So you're not allowed to get in that door until the receptionist buzzes you in and then you go into the office. Washington High School, they already had the double door setup, but we didn't have the electronic mechanism in place. We've got that now so that you can walk into the lobby and you go into the office, but you can't go into the main building. And there's quite a bit of fencing that we've got going around. And if you think about some of our properties, we've got some that are wide open in terms of buildings that are not connected. They're contiguous on property, but they're not connected to one another. And that creates some problems when students and faculty have to move between buildings. And what we've done at this point is just closed off campuses so that the public's not able to get in. These are just some examples, a fence there that's opened up at certain times, but you couldn't have anybody from the public that would walk onto the property and be able to get there. We're proud of that work because it's what we said we had a need to do. We've got other things that are going on. We've got a couple of projects that are a little bit more complicated. If you think about it, when schools were built back in the 50s and 60s, they weren't built for the safety concerns that we're having to deal with now. And each one's a little bit different in terms of the footprint and what the blueprints look like in the open area when you walk in. But when you look at safety and security, a good portion of the dollars that we've received over the last few years have been spent on upgrading cameras and camera systems, the monitoring pieces that we've got, the ability to be able to look at a camera and be able to see things that help us whether we're turning it over to law enforcement or we're looking at some investigation. If the camera's not good quality, it really does, other than being up on the screen, up on the ceiling, it may not deter anything other than people think they're being videoed. But if the quality of the video is not well, good, we can't do very much with it. So the $300,000 that would be there is a dollar figure that I don't know that we have to keep at that level as we move forward. I think we've gotta take a look at where we're at and then we may come back to you in subsequent years and say, here's something that we need to work on. When I was a principal in Cumberland County, I asked the folks in the county to let me pilot a program that would put locks on the doors, that teachers would use an ID badge that has a little chip in it and they would hold it up to the locking mechanism and it would give the person permission to come in and out. And it also has a bypass where you can put a combination or you can put a master key in. We did that in September in the school that I was in. Before we broke for the Christmas break, every school had those planned to be installed because they worked so well. That was 10 years ago. The quality has gotten much better, the price has come down significantly. All of our staff members have ID badges. The beauty of that system that I like is it tracks who's coming and going. It also allows us, if a person loses a badge, all we've gotta do is go into the computer and remove that ID number and that badge, if it's found by somebody in the public, has no, it can't open anything. Or if we've got an individual who should only have access from 7:30 to 2:30, we can control that on the system as well. And if they were to come in at 6:00 or if they were to come in after hours, they wouldn't be able to have access to get in. So there's some things like that that we want to work on. We're piloting a couple of programs at schools, we want to see how they work. We know that not everything is gonna be the same at all of our schools, but because of your generosity supporting this request, we feel like we're at a better place right now than we've ever been and we want to continue to work on that. So that was one I've got highlighted. And then down at the bottom of that page, I think your pages have numbers on them. If you look in the capital 17, 18, that's really all we're focusing on in terms of our request. There are two dollar figures there I want to point out. One is $178,000 and the other is $20,000. The $178,000 has two activity buses. We have always had a replacement schedule of activity buses that covered, I think, 18 year period of time, buses would be replaced. The state replaces orange buses or yellow buses when we purchase them. And right now that replacement cycle is 250,000 miles or 25 years. And if we go, I think the time window is from 20 to 25, we get a little bit of a credit and some money back from the state. But we keep our equipment well maintained, the fleet is there, the activity buses follow on us as a local responsibility. So because of the number that we had, we had a cycle that would replace one every 18 years. And we didn't do that last year because of the budget and where we were at. So what we've got on is the number looks high, but when you divide that by two, that's what the cost of an activity bus is. And then when you look at two pool cars, and you may wonder, how are you gonna get two cars for $20,000? What we're also doing in that area is purchasing from driver's ed. So when the driver's ed programs get, cars get some mileage on them, they're able to purchase new cars, we're able to buy the driver's ed cars at a discount and they've been serviced by our folks, we have a pretty good idea of the maintenance record and we're able to get a little bit more of a benefit. We've got a breakdown, if you wanted to see it, of the cars, of our fleet vehicles, of our buses, that tell you exactly how many miles they are, when they were up for scheduled replacement, what kind of maintenance we've spent on those. And we've got some that we don't allow to go out of the county just because we're concerned about the maintenance piece of that. We want to phase those out of our fleet if possible. Server room on page two, $45,000. Just for the integrity and the safety of what we do from a computing world and the documents that we have and all the operational type things that are done from technology, the server room is an elevated room, it's air-conditioned, heating and cool, and all the servers, the units would be in that room. But we've had some problems in the past with flooding, we've had to move those out and we've had some questions as to whether or not we were gonna lose data and also generator backup. That's been on the docket for a couple of years and we just feel like because we don't want to push the limit on that and wind up having our data compromised, we included that piece on it. And again, I'm highlighting a few, you may want to go back and talk about some more. If you'll go to page five. We've had some questions come up that deal with athletics quite a bit in the last few years. And quite honestly, all three of our high school tracks need some work done. We can't do all the tracks in one year and the cost of, depending on what you do with that, can be pretty steep and expensive. We've included the track at Southside High School this year and the reason that track was included was because we did a significant amount of work on the backside of the end zone where that large ditch or canal was this past year. And we've built that area up, we brought in significant amounts of dirt and we were able to get some things done on that end of the track. And because of where the erosion occurred, it's the place that needs to be fixed and we'd have that taken care of. So that's why that track is there. And you'll see resurfacing, restrike tracks at Northside and Washington are pushed out to the two to five year area. The new item that I want to share with you and get feedback from you is an $80,000 item. And this is another request that's come from our community and folks have talked about this since I've been here too. But there's some property that's contiguous to the Washington High School property. If you pull in off of Slatestone and you go in the driveway where the buses are, there's a property that sits just to the left of that. And we've had some contact with folks in the community who are interested in doing a soccer complex at Washington, which would ultimately turn into some other athletic pieces too, because that property would be large enough to accommodate two types of fields. But the purchase price on that property, we've been, I've got it in writing where it's been offered to us, a little bit cheaper than it's offered, I think publicly, is $79,900. I don't know if it's 900 or 999, but we rounded it off to $80,000.
How many acres is that, Don?
I don't remember, Gary, I can't remember what, I can get that for, I've got all of that, I just don't have it with me today. But what the ultimate goal of that would be, if it were fully developed and completely finished, would be to have a full-size regulation soccer field where all the soccer activities would be on that field. And it would be tournament conditioned because we'd love to be able to host tournaments. So at some point there'd be bleachers, there'd be lights that would be there, there'd be bathroom, restroom facilities. And then there'd be another field that would be built a little bit closer to Slatestone that could be lacrosse, it could be a practice field of some other, it could be a practice soccer field, but there'd be enough room to be able to do that. We've looked at some things like Kate B. Rentals to help us out. The problem is the Kate B. Rentals money, if we do that like we've done with our playgrounds across the county, we have to open that property up to the public after school hours. And because of the nature of this field and what we're talking about, we're not talking about the public being on it if it's a competition type of a field. But the $80,000 that's there would allow us to acquire the property. Now what I'm gonna say to you, I'm telling you what I would like to be able to do, but there certainly are no promises. We've had a couple of individuals that have said that they may be willing to bequeath some money to be able to have some naming rights of a complex like that. That's something that we certainly could look at, but that promise is not, I mean it's just a conversation that's been held in the community. But I believe if we had the $80,000, it would allow us to go seek some grants to be able to get the lights and the bleachers. Musco, which is a lighting company that does a lot of athletic field lighting, have some grant opportunities that are available. But we have to have the land to be able to do that and have those conversations. So my role would be to try to recoup as much of that $80,000 from donations or somebody to bequeath money to us if we could do that. So I wanted you to see that dollar figure there as well. And then down below that, there are two that are needs at Northeast Elementary. The gravel on the parking lot in the back, it's a problem if folks park back there for athletic events. This is not paving that area, it's just putting gravel in to be able to have a parking area for the public to come in, home investors to be able to park and walk to the athletic fields. And then there's been some issues in the parking lot, the front of the school, of redirecting the way the traffic flows in and out. So those are what those two dollar figures are that you see there. And those are the two that I've highlighted. Again, if you go down that list, what we tried to do is give you an idea of what the athletic total is for the estimated cost overall, for the capital for the year we're going into, which is what we're actually looking at, and then the capital for two to five years. And then on that last page, on page seven, is where the grant totals come in. We've done system-wide furniture replacement just because we have that as an ongoing cost. We've also got a dollar figure for painting. We don't necessarily have specific schools there because we're doing that based by need and we're trying to work with the folks that help us with community service to be able to get folks to come out and scrape and do some other things that help offset the cost of an actual painting project so that we're able to get more done for the monies that we've got there. But the overall budget request for capital for 17, 18 sits at $2.143 million and you have the opportunity to see that and look at any specific projects or whatnot are there. Again, Mr. Williams, anything from the board?
No, I was just searching up some of that man for a fact.
Don, with some of these things you're asking for, like the parking lot gravel, when was the last time these were done? Were they ever done?
The gravel's never been done.
Okay, what about the resurfacing, repaving?
That was done, I don't know if it's been done since the school's been built, but in terms, what they're talking about at that particular school is having a different place where the traffic leaves the campus and creating a little bit more parking at the front is what they're looking to do there. And Stan could tell you, some of the asphalt that we've done at Washington High School originally were patch job and they don't last very long and we've gone in, but it doesn't take very long to burn through $10,000 or $20,000 when you're looking at a significant asphalt project, more than that actually.
So it's possible these were never done since the schools were built?
Not since I've been here.
They have not.
That was the first original surface. I think Washington would be been redone once.
Do you have anything in here about the trailers?
We didn't add anything on the modulars. We've got that in our two to five and our six to 10 year plan, but I'm glad that came up here. We have not had, as a board, we've not had any discussion about building a school. I know there's been some conversation about that. We've not had a conversation about anything with the modular piece and the reason why we're holding on that, we're working with the Department of Public Instruction. In fact, we met with them back in January and we've sent them the documents on the Jimmy Height study that we did, the architect who came in, I don't, how many, five years ago maybe, something like that? The year after that or shortly, maybe a year and a half after that, the commissioners also paid for a population study, which gave us an idea of what the 10 and 15-year population outlook would be. We've given both of those documents to the folks at DPI and I've got a meeting on the 15th of this month to go back and kind of get an idea of where we are. We feel like we need some guidance from some other folks before we make any move in that direction at all. So we've tabled that, we've got some modulars that are in such bad shape, we can't go into them right now. They're locked up and not being used. And at some point in time, as we look at space, that's gonna be an issue that we've gotta take a look at. But in terms of proposals or ideas, we feel like it's premature to jump into anything without having some feedback from the experts that can give us some ideas of what we might need to do.
Okay. Earlier you talked about the number of teachers as classroom sizes when they change and I understand it's an unfunded mandate for the classrooms themselves. Is there anything in here about planning for increasing classrooms?
No, I mean, that's an issue that we're gonna have to deal with in 12 months. I mean, we're gonna have to have a place to put those individuals when they come in and that's probably the more perplexing issue than the salaries and the pieces of financial funding that go along with that. We could look and say right now, if that happened today and they didn't relax the mandate like they did, we could tell you exactly which schools we would need, how many teachers at. But we won't know for sure what that number is.
I'm talking about the physical classroom?
That's right. We won't know that number until we know what the enrollment at those individual schools are. It may change one or two at the most probably. We'd have a pretty good idea of where they are, but if you're looking at John Cotton-Taylor or if you're looking at Eastern Elementary or Bath or Chacoini Primary, there's no more space to be able to put people there and that will be an issue that we've gotta determine how to figure that out.
Just for planning purposes, have you put any money in here?
For?
Planning for the increase in classrooms?
No, no, there's nothing in the capital budget for that.
Don, I've got one question. How many miles a year do y'all put on the activity buses?
Depends on which school they're at. I've got that sheet that I can give you, the age and the number of miles that we have. A high school will put significantly more on because of the athletic participation and the distance that they travel. Most of our middle schools stay basically within Beaufort County and they may venture into the edge of Martin or to go into Pitt, but we try to restrict the amount of miles that the middle school schools travel. But you also have times when you have field trips and if the middle school or high school for that matter's not using a bus, you may have a school that takes three activity buses to go to Greensboro for something, you may have a competition that's going on. So it depends on what the activities are, but we monitor that every year and we've got a document that tells us how many miles are on each one. But it really does depend on the school and primarily the activity level of the athletic program and how far they're traveling. If you go to Ocracoke or if you have to go all the way to Lejeune or you've got a school that we've been fortunate, that some, several of our schools have been successful and have been involved in state competitions, so that you're traveling quite a few miles when you're dealing with that.
And you said you try to replace them every 18 years?
Every 18 years, there's a cycle to do that replacement. And we can show you which buses are out there, when they were last replaced, how many miles they have on them, that type of thing.
The land at Washington was eight acres.
Eight acres. Well, sorry, eight acres on the land at Washington.
Eight acres.
The concern I think about that land in particular was, you know, who knows if it'll be available again, if it's sold or at what price and if you have it, whether you do anything with it immediately, you've got that and you can do some things with it down the road.
Any money in your overall budget for supplements for the teachers?
We did that for two consecutive years.
Correct.
But there's no money in the budget this year to do that. I haven't had any conversation with anybody about doing that. We did $100, $100 two consecutive years, so the current budget reflects what they've gotten in the past, so that money hasn't been cut, but there's not any additional supplement money in this year's budget.
So in this, the new budget, there'd be no money for supplements? You haven't put any money in for supplement?
No, new money, it'll be the same amount as what they had.
Oh, so you'd be giving another $100?
No, no, we'll be given what they got the current year, but we won't increase it.
But I'm saying increase, there's no, there's no.
There's no increase money, but the supplement that they currently have will be there.
And if you did it, if you did, if we did an increase, how much would that be?
I think without looking back at later, I think it was $56,000 for a hundred, I think for a $100 increase. That's gonna change depending on the number of years of experience that teachers have, but that should give you a pretty good ballpark of where we are. But we've had two consecutive years where we've done a $100 increase.
And how does that compare to surrounding communities?
It's a little higher than some and a little lower than others. I could, we've looked at that number. You know, some are doing signing bonuses, some districts offer a supplement depending on what subject area teachers teach. I don't, again, don't have that number in front of me, but we could get that for you to take a look at that.
I'm not asking about the dollar amount each year, what I'm asking is the total.
Total amount, I understand that. And our dollar figure I think is 15 to 1700, I think, or 16 to 18, I'm not sure, 16 to 50 and then goes up, I think, 200. That's significantly more than some are, and it's been a recruiting piece that we've been able to use to draw folks in. But there's some folks that don't have supplements at all. In fact, I did my dissertation back a long time ago and part of that was looking at people who stayed where they went into and the supplement piece comes into play. And depending on where you're at in smaller, poorer counties, they don't have the ability to put that local money there, but they also have a harder time attracting folks to come in. So you're gonna have to look at creative ways of being able to bump up salary. Because if you're a teacher in North Carolina, you basically go any county you want to choose to go to, your basic salary's gonna be the same. The difference is gonna be what kind of local supplement could or possibly be added to that that would get you bumped up.
So it does have an impact on hiring?
It does.
But I think it's also safe to say, if you look at the county next to us, Pitt, they have larger signing bonuses and they have larger supplements.
I can't hear you, Terry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said if you look at the county next to us, Pitt, who we probably are in competition with, they have larger signing bonuses and they have larger supplements than we do. And they also have a grand of mini-millions of dollars they've just received to use that.
I didn't want to give you kind of, you know, Goldilocks, not too much, not too little. I want to try to give you enough to explain where we were at. And I felt like telling you what our perceived needs are and putting that on paper and then, you know, as we have to meet after this is over and we have dollar figures that we can work from, then we'll go back to work on whatever it is that we need. I appreciate the opportunity just to be able to stand in front of you and share with you what our concerns are, because I want to give you more than just the numbers that are on the page, I want to give you a story that goes along with that and the public to hear that as well. You know, through the years, and our board I know will agree with what I'm gonna say, with the funding cuts that we've had at the state and federal levels, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish what we've done if we would not have had the local support that we've had from you all. And there's, I can't give you enough praise and pats on the back for that. And when you take a look at our funding, it's progressively increased. It hasn't been huge spikes, but it's been enough for us to offset the cuts that we've had to absorb from the state and federal level. So I want to thank you for that and I want to thank you for your support and, you know, I would expect continued support at that level because that's what you've done in I would expect continued support at that level, because that's what you've done in terms of trying to make things work for us, and we're very appreciative of that.
Any other questions, comments?
I've got three numbers, Don, that I would like for everybody in the room to write down. We collect roughly $600,000 for every one penny in increase in our tax rate. If you take the increase in this budget, it means that we would have to increase our tax rate 4.7 cent per hundred. For the check that you write, which is more or less what people can tell you, they can't tell you what the value of their home is or their property or what the tax rate is, but they can tell you they wrote a check for $1,000. That means that check would have to be eight and a half percent higher. The sort of number, I think, shows the public how the commissioners treat the school system. If you look at the total budget and divided by the tax revenue that comes in on real estate and the vehicles, it's 45%. If you look at this new number, if we did that, you would get 54% of our tax revenue coming in on real estate and vehicles. The value of our real estate and our vehicle, that number is fairly constant. I don't think we'll have much of an increase there. But, you know, it's a challenge, and we either have to pull down the fund balance, or we have to cut, or we have to increase the tax rate. I know some people don't like numbers, but for the person that stops me and says, what are you doing for me this coming year? If I ask them what the value of their home is, they can't tell me. If I ask them what the tax rate is, they can't tell me. But if they've wrote a check for $1,000, they'll tell you $1,000. It, and I'd like for everyone to understand, as we sit around the table, it's a real challenge because I think everybody agrees that the public schools and the community college is a priority. But it has a drastic impact when you're a T-1 county dealing with the kind of budget that we've got. But I think that we will all try to do the best that we can to meet the needs. I personally will say this, I don't know if the other commissioners would agree with this, but I'm one for seeing if it works in the overall budget, the total dollars. I mean, you guys are elected officials, so I depend on you to spend the money wisely and in the right place. But, you know, when I look at your budget, I look at the total dollars. You know, I don't try to pull anything out and say, that's a priority for me, you know, I'd like for you to do that. And that's the way I approach the budget. I can't answer for the other people that are sitting up here, but I greatly appreciate what you guys do and what you're elected to do, because you're tasked with a challenge just like we are. And I would like to think, or at least I know over the last two and a half years, I felt like that we are a team and that we try our best to work together as we get through this budget process. Anyone else? If not.
I want to say, we are very blessed to have the teachers that we have in Beaufort County that dedicate hours long beyond what a lot of people do on their normal jobs. They go early, they stay late, they grade papers at night, they receive phone calls at night. And for them to continue doing what they're doing, and many times, especially at the elementary level, but as time goes on, I think we're seeing, it goes all the way up to the 12th grade, a lot of these teachers are raising these children. They're spending more hours with these children than their parents are, because parents are working. So I'm always going to be the one that's going to thank those teachers. And unfortunately, in Beaufort County, we're not always in a position to thank them financially, so we try to do as much as we can. But just keep in mind, I think we continue to ask more, and the state especially, and I know that as a local government, you're not able, I wish you could, address the unfunded mandates that come out of Raleigh. So we just keep adding this expectation on these classroom teachers, and yet the state is not providing us with the funds to carry it out. And so then we turn to you to ask for help. But it is a challenge. It's a challenge for us and a challenge for you. So I just thank you for considering what we're giving you today and ask that your questions come back to us so we can address them.
Just, yeah, if there's any doubt about the numbers at all, please ask Don, because, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and dispute numbers like that, but at $600,000 for one cent of tax rate, wouldn't 4.7 percent, 4.7 cents increase be at $2,820,000? I think that's what that would come.
I was taking the.
And we're not asking for $2,800,000, so just make sure we get the right numbers to them, Don.
I thought the increase, well, no, I'm sorry. That 2.1 is a total compared to last year.
Looking at the increase is what I'm looking at, and we're not asking for 2.8 million increase.
I stand corrected.
Just make sure we, I mean, you know, because I want you to have the right numbers. If there's any question, I.
That's right.
Yeah. But it still is an increase, you're right.
An increase. You know, when we look at the, one of the major needs of this county is economic growth, is jobs. And when a company or people move into an area, there's certain things they look at. You know, one of them is schools, one of them is safety, one of them is health. Now, there's others, environmental issues, water, sporting things we have here, but those are, so education is a major aspect of economic growth. You can't lose sight of that. So, you know, education to me is extremely important, and I assume every commissioner here, and I know you guys are on the board, so education is important to you. So when I look at this, I look at this, what's going to be the impact of economic growth in the county? And I think you've done an excellent job here in putting this together. Now, the final numbers will be interesting when we begin to look at it.
And when we hear the state, we'll have a little better look. It's always hard when we have to talk numbers with you before we get the other part of the puzzle. As Don said, it's just a strange way to, it's a strange way to put a budget together.